I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, all.
Morning.
Call the meeting to order. We have a light out here for serving all energy, I think. Anyway, we'll call the meeting to order. Is there anything else for the agenda? Are we good with the way it's printed? Good? All right?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes from the twenty ninth.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Duck it, aye.
Motion in a second for the minutes for the twenty ninth of August. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Claims.
I got, uh, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, ninety-nine cents on general. Four seven nine, two eight four point ninety-nine. Drainage twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four point sixty-four. Two two two, six four point six four.
I'll make that per second.
Motion in a second for the numbers as stated. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. I think after visiting with Ben on Friday, quite a bit of that was for that.
Quite a bit's for Whitman.
Well, uh, looks like general public concerns. In the height, we're good. Looks like Dean.
Hey, good deal. Get me out of here right away.
Seal bids for pickup?
Yep.
Quite a few, there.
Yep, we advertised for the last three weeks in the local paper. Pickup, we had a couple people come down and drove it just to see, which is fine.
Yep.
We knew who they were, so we had no problem with them driving it. And at this time, the paper said we were going home here at the supervisor's meeting. So here I am.
All right.
So.
Correct for that weapon, sir?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Uh, we ended up getting eight bids, so pretty pleased with that. So, here we go. Bid number one. Uh, Timothy Clarkin submitted a bid for seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Seven one fifty?
Yep. Bid number two. Um, Chris Wendell from Badger, um, he's gonna give a bid of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. As you know, he's the one that bought our Old Tahoe the last time, so.
Oh, really? Yeah. Been happy.
Yeah, I think he was. Okay, bid number three. Uh, let's see here. Ringwood Motors out of Ringwood, Illinois. Uh, they're submitting a bid of four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And bid number four is from Robert and Valerie, uh, Strunberg from Pocahontas.
Not sure how close my spelling is on that.
I know, I know what it says.
We're looking at it, big numbers higher. Let's see here. Their bid is for seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Bid number five. Not sure what's going on here.
Stapled it.
He wanted to make sure.
They just mailed it to the paper.
Let me rip this.
Okay, this bid came from David Jones from Humboldt for seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Bid number six comes from, uh, Jason, um, Kosch, Koschland Dresch or something like that. Um, his bid is for seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
I'm just gonna put him down as Jason K.
Bid number, uh, seven. Uh, Travis Grebner from Humboldt, seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. This one's from, uh, Jason Broad. And his bid is for nine thousand, five hundred dollars. So, Mr. Chairman, with those in mind, I would say let's accept the one from Chris Wendell for, what was it?
Eleven thousand, two fifty?
Two fifty, yep.
So, we do the same criteria when the check goes through?
Yep.
Do you hold the pickup or technical tell?
Yep, we make sure everything is clear, or if they bring us a, a letter from their bank or something that says the check is a good, that's what we wanna know.
And we turn it over?
Yep. Yep.
All right.
Very good, yep.
Worked very well.
Yeah, that went very well.
We need a motion on that?
I'd make the motion that we accept the bid from, is it Chris Wendell?
Yes.
Of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the, uh, old sheriff's truck.
Yep.
Give a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. And we appreciate, uh, all the bidders.
Bidders.
Thank you. Time to start driving.
Yep. And we'll get to notify these people, let them know what happened and go from there.
All right, and also while you're here, are we gonna physically talk about the?
Your shirt.
Your, uh?
Sit in and listen in anyway.
Listen what?
What are you calling your associate deputy up here for? Attitude adjustment. This is the list that, that Ben compiled for corners. Dangerous corners, and I just figured you guys would have more.
You'd have any input.
As to, hopefully, we're not gonna beat this thing around, but I, I thought Ben's, Ben and I were visiting on Monday, or on Friday, and he's got them listed from top to, down to the state is about one sixty-nine down there. Those are state intersections, so, anyway. Okay, Ben, you wanna?
I wanna jump right to that one.
Well, can we, or do you wanna go to?
Yeah, let's go to that first, so we get out of here.
And we hate to hold up the duty, but.
Are you going?
We're not waiting for you. Can't be with a line, that's a nice show.
Right, is that there for me?
Morning.
Morning.
So, two weeks ago, we had a discussion about putting some flashing beacons at the intersection of C twenty-six and P fifty-six. At that time, we tabled the discussion for me to go back and research how many accidents we had had at all of our paved-to-paved intersections that are not state-owned. Uh, I compiled the list. I believe you guys all have it in front of you as far as the number of accidents at each intersection. I did pass a few on, I believe, to the paper and, uh, to the radio station as well. Uh, P thirty-three and C twenty-six, which would be the Bowe-Rutland Road where it meets, meets the Bradgate Road, was our highest number of accidents with six reported accidents in the last eleven years. Uh, one major injury, one minor injury. Two of the accidents were due to running the stop sign and two were due to failure to yield after stopping. And obviously, you guys can all see from the list, the list goes down.
This is in eleven year.
This is in the past eleven years on, uh, the Iowa DOT's Iowa Crash Analysis Tool, so ICAT.
And, and basically, the ones we're looking at is the ones that they don't stop at all.
Right.
Cause if it's a flashing beacon and they pull out from the stop, it don't matter if it was a flashing beacon or a red stop sign.
Exactly. Yep. So, basically, the ones that we paid the most attention to were, uh, the ones where they had run the stop sign themselves, yep. Um, we, as you guys know, we have installed three beacons throughout the years with safety funding. Since the installation of those three beacons, there have been two subsequent, subsequent crashes. Both of those were, uh, the driver was cited for, uh, alcohol. So, I guess I would say the beacons are working.
Mm-hmm.
But they can't, they're not a hundred percent, obviously.
Definitely not.
Additional factors at work. Um, in the past eleven years, Humboldt County has had twenty-eight fatalities. Of those twenty-eight, sixteen were due to, uh, drug or alcohol.
And Ben, you did include some of the state?
Yes.
Highway, and obviously, state is state.
There's quite a bit more traffic on state, um, as, as we would expect. The numbers are higher. Obviously, Highway one sixty-nine and Highway three, where the intersection meets here in town, is our highest number of accidents. Majority of those, as you can see from the twenty-nine reported accidents, twenty-seven were property home. Meaning, everybody knows how to stop, maybe they just didn't hit the brakes in time, or.
Lost their turn.
Or forgot whose turn it was.
Yeah.
Uh, I did forward these on to Sheriff Kruger and Chief Deputy Lampy for their input as to which intersections they feel are the, the most dangerous and, and the most needed of these, of these beacons. Uh, cause obviously, these aren't just the reported accidents where there's still a vehicle there. Uh, I'm, I'm sure that they get called out to intersections where they saw a vehicle go in the ditch, and by the time they get there, it's gone. There's no report able to be filed.
Mm-hmm. The scary thing about this is, and there's no ever way of reporting it, is just the traveling public, and we'll say the defensive drivers that are watching, you know, and they see the, the, well, they have the right-of-way, but they see, they see the vehicles that do not stop, that they're already designated stop signs, and they do not stop. And that's where the concern, you know, originated.
Right, and, and I can't.
No, there's no, you can't, nobody can, nobody can, but you can, you know, we all have our own general areas of the county, and we all have probably one of these intersections in that general area that's an unknown, you know, issue.
Right.
Uh, and that's, that's, all of us have seen it too, where you've driven along, and that's where the defensive driving, because it scares the bejbers out of ya. I mean, you're going, you know, driving reasonable and, and you are not required to stop, but where these intersections are, and the worst ones to me seem to be the ones that are crossing.
Right.
Because they just come up and they, may or may not slow down. You, we've all seen where you've got people that are coming up at way too high a rate of speed, and you're driving along and you see that.
You slow.
And you're saying, I'm.
Slow down to make sure that they stop.
And I would say there's times they don't, and there's times they do. They should be slow, a lot slower where you, you know, know they're stopping, but. It's, uh, in these lights, I've paid more attention, as I've mentioned previously, in different areas of the whole state, uh, where they have, you know, the through streets and the stop sign. See a lot more of, a lot of the LED stop signs, and it, it does call your attention. I mean, you, you see it sooner. It seems to grab your attention sooner than a static stop, stop sign. And, you know, nothing's ever gonna solve. You, you cited the, you know, drinking, driving, you know, that's already a criminal offense. You're not supposed to do it, but people do, and that's what causes, per the data, a lot of the, uh, problems. You know, which people wouldn't do that either.
But distracted driving.
The distracted driving, but one thing maybe, like I said, if we can get a program to start on the intersections we have control of as a county, to put the flashing beacons, I think we're taking a step in the right direction. I know we can't do them all at once, but I think we could start. And I, I really wish that, and I'm not, again, I'm not a statistician, but the notoriously bad intersection is right to the west of me, which is C twenty. I, I don't think these numbers are accurate on that.
As far as?
What they're showing for the last eleven years, not in my.
So, that'd be one sixty-nine and C twenty.
Yeah, when they're saying there was three accidents, then one.
There's been more than, there's been more than one, more than three accidents unless it's been longer ago. I remember there was a, was it a Mustang or a Corvette accident where?
Yeah.
There's, there's fatalities.
And I don't know how long ago that was. Maybe it's fallen off of this.
I can tell ya it's not eleven years.
Yeah.
No, it's probably four years ago, four to five.
Cause that was your wife, wasn't it?
Yeah, she was there.
That one that was going, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, I raised the.
Less than five, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean.
Everything's supposed to be reported, but if it doesn't get reported to the state of Iowa.
And it doesn't get put into the database.
Get put into that.
So, we're, you know, it's, it's better than nothing. And, and it's disappointing that those intersections, we're talking on the county level, that the state doesn't step up and spend some of, you know, their money, or the taxpayers' money, rather, and get, uh, they do, you know, and I just think of how long it took on a lot of major roadways to get the crossing arms for railroads.
Right.
I mean, I just think of, you know, historically, a lot of those were installed, installed after fatalities. And, yeah, that's a rough way to, to decide that you need a safety feature. Say, well, someone died and, yeah, oh, we'll give you some money now cause somebody died. We'd like to keep that from happening.
Right.
Is the way I look at it.
Well, that, that first intersection, I mean, that one just sits out in the middle of nowhere there. North of, south of Bowe, north of Rutland there.
Yeah, those are the ones where your people don't know the area, are driving along, and they don't realize there's a stop sign coming up.
There used to be a farm right there.
Yeah, that kinda blocked your view too.
Yeah. But that oughta help because people had to stop, but now it's wide open and.
On the Iowa Avenue and, uh, yeah.
I'm sure every year we get safety money, or not every year.
Not every year, no. Um, the, so what we've done in the past is we've applied for traffic safety improvement money. Um, I believe the applications are due. There, there's either a set that's due in October, or there's a set that's due in August. And I can't remember which it is, but you apply and you find out like three months later if you get qualified for it. Uh, I can request, I can try and request funding. Of course, most of that is predicated on number of accidents, fatalities, the number of times that we think we can, you know, uh, reduce some of, you know, obviously, somebody passing away at the intersection. Uh, so we can try and apply for some of those. As far as, uh, creating a county policy, like, like Eric had said, um, if this is a, a direction that the board wants to go, I'd say we start, we take the top two or three intersections and hit two or three every year over the course of the next five to even ten years until we've eventually got these beacons up at the intersections. The problem becomes, at what point do you lose the effectiveness of the flashing light?
I don't know if you'd lose it, to be honest with you.
Eventually.
Yeah, the lanes get trained to see it all the time and.
That's why we installed rumble strips, because people put paying attention to the, to the stop sign itself. We like the intersections. I mean, we put rumble strips in the center of roads for vehicles that travel over the center line. I mean, you're, you're trying to deter the distracted driver.
Trying to wake up.
By trying to wake them up or get them off of their phone, and there's only so many things that you can do. And, um, the auto industry refuses to just disable telephones when they're moving fifty miles an hour.
That'd be a simple thing to do.
It would be.
With the phone companies should just, yeah.
Yeah.
More like the phone. More likes the phone than, than, yeah, but, but, I mean, in all fairness, not every intersection's gonna have a flashing beacon or a stop sign of some sort, so I don't know that, you know, it's gonna become a, you know, less effective. But it, it does seem to grab your attention and, uh, you know, it, I don't know, I think it's a good idea. You've mentioned it, if you start somewhere, and we only have county responsibility for, you know, a s- set number of, you know, highly traveled intersections. You can't do anything about the state. I would like to see them do that as well. I think it would be money well spent.
Ben, what is, uh, I drove up there the other day, what, there's electricity in that corner, that corner, isn't there? Could we just put a flashing? I know. But up there in that corner. Yeah, but that's for the, for the, uh, solar ones.
The other ones would be cheaper. Well, maybe not.
But then you, then you're paying the electric bill.
Put the weed in and, you know.
Each one of our intersections, I think we pay eight or nine dollars for a light at every intersection.
Give them, multiply that.
Oh, yeah, um.
And that's a monthly charge.
Right. Do the flashing ones do them monthly, or is it a rate?
That I don't know. You're talking as far as like one sixty-nine and three, where they've got the single flashing red beacon above it. I don't know what the charge is for that.
Well, the day you asked me on sixty-nine and three over there, those are just flashing lights. They aren't around the stoplights, stop signs. It is a flashing light, it's just like. So.
I know when we did some, uh, paving and some curbs, we used safety money and things like that. I, I don't think it hurts to apply for any kind of safety money you can get for stop signs, flashing signs. Like you said, some of the, a couple of those that major intersections really got two ma- major roads crossed. I don't know, it's, especially the couple that are out in the wide open where.
Well, I'd like to see our sheriff department that have people out on the road, get some input from them as to what they think their, these corners are.
You guys know where the worst corners are.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Well, I remember, you know, some of those stuff, and it's not, as we talked before, that, I remember Dean, I happened to just, by coincidence, that was at, that Iowa, Iowa Avenue, it's, it's the one south of between Rutland and Bowe and Bradgate-Harty Road. There have been numerous. You, you'd mentioned that, cited that, and it's not reflected, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It just, it's not, doesn't get to the state's database. We know that, but, yeah, I remember just happened coincidentally within, again, the past five years. Uh, and I can't remember what the, it was a pretty severe accident. So, it, it's, yeah, like whoever said, kind of the out, wide open. That one, the one on County K, uh, where people can, the traffic is not gonna stop, but there's a fairly major traveled road going across it, and those are two.
On C twenty-six there?
Yeah.
And the majority of those were ones that had that detour going across there. That's, I think, we had mostly accidents on.
Had more traffic, but, yeah, and that one that was brought to our attention.
Three years ago.
It's just like, pulled out in front of a car, and there's major injury and a couple other little accidents there, so.
But the one on County K and, well, Hardy-Bradgate Road was really called the pe- the traveling public's attention with the corn is on every intersection, and so the defensive drivers, and you can go today even with the corn still there, it's hard to be defensive because you don't have the visibility of the car that may not stop.
Right.
And that's where this all started, so, um.
I'd say keep applying for safety money, and as we get it, we'll use it up. I wanna look for Dean to give us.
When we were little, my dad made us go to those corners with a corn knife and cut that thing down.
Some.
Quite a ways back, isn't it, so people could.
Occasionally, I think Bruce has seen that. You do see it occasionally, but not very often.
This intersection's too paved road, so the right-of-way's plenty wide, and the drop is far enough back. But I know what you mean. A lot of our gravel roads. Yep. There's not a rate of there's any approach.
You have to be very defensive. You have to be very defensive on the gravel roads.
Yep.
So, what are your wishes here?
Mine? I am just a tool.
I am. I'm looking for directions from the board.
You know, I think we should apply for safety money, and we use it as we get it, and, and take recommendations from the sheriff's department where they think they should go.
I would agree with that.
Maybe look at some of them putting four-way stops to the two-way. Well, we could look at doing engineer studies. Uh, people would probably bawl.
Yeah.
If you switched K-Road to a four-way.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd have people bawking.
We have.
Then you'd have more accidents.
Yeah, that would be worse. They'd be running.
Let's see, the rest of January.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I mean, I, I, we've talked, everybody's talked about, nobody wants to be a villain, but by the same token, I think that if there's corners that are worse than others, I, I, I don't know all of the corners, and you guys are out there every day. We might even ask our secondary roadspeople what their thoughts are. They, they see more skid marks and stuff.
Tire tracks and the dents from the night.
People down through the dents that missed a corner or missed the stop sign or.
Broken off stop signs.
Stolen.
Stolen signs.
Nine-one-one signs a lot lately.
Really?
Great. Um, nonetheless, for the other discussion.
I'm in the world with somebody running nine-one-one.
I know that. I was thinking.
It's just numbers.
Texas Avenue is the big one right now.
Really?
I don't know.
Depends upon if there's a Peterson Street.
Oh, you're not, you're talking the street.
I'm talking the intersection.
Oh, I know you're taking Peterson.
No, 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 no. Well, they put a pass and they take those too.
I don't do that, yeah.
Unless we implement, you know, some of, you know, and sure, you try to pick and choose, but even though, yeah, it's always great if you can get some state money for whatever.
Um, I, I can, I can look into it and see when that application is due.
I would definitely do that, but do we start with an intersection here and there on our own and just plug away at it?
I don't know if you guys did. I had, I did have one phone call, uh, from somebody in town, uh, outside of town asking for a beacon out in front of their property. I don't know if you guys got any of those. They saw the newspaper article here two weeks ago, and they called in and they said, hey, I want my little beacon. I guess what they find, I'd say, I'd say find a criteria and follow it, otherwise people are just gonna start rolling in and asking for.
Definitely.
The only thing I can think of on those beacons is where there used to be, uh, and a lot of them were on gravel roads, but even so, there's county churches and such, you know, country churches, I should say. And occasionally, they were on a hard surface road in the county. A lot of times, you would see a beacon, you know, but then that was a public, more gathering place. I can't think of too many places, private residences, but be that as it may. I just think it, I think it's been a good discussion. I'd like to see some of these get installed, um, on some of the known issued areas.
Well, I'm all for that, and if we get some input from our sheriff's department and our secondary roadspeople. our secondary roadspeople, we come back and look at it again, see where we're at, and I mean, I don't expect you to do it all in a day.
Well, and Ben's great with budgets and stuff. I mean, I hate to bring this up, but budget season always seems to come around pretty quickly. Something we could discuss moving forward, and if we did a intersection or two a year, could you just back, just back, back to that end as you're working on budget numbers when that comes up?
Yeah.
If we just do it on our own, I mean, sure, apply for the state money, but, you know how state, you know how that goes, Ben. Stuff you can apply for is some pretty random, it's hitting this on any road-related things from the state, but I just, I would direct you to just, as you start working on budgetary stuff, uh, just as the county, see if we can't do a couple intersections a year. About breaking the bank.
Perfect.
Sure can.
Okay?
All right.
That's awesome.
Hey, Dean, are you going to reach out to this second place guy, just to let him know where you're at?
Well, I don't know.
Well, I'm, but the second guy knows that something more to take place with number one, so I'll just name away and drop from there down to seven hundred, four hundred, or whatever the next bit is.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you.
Look at that, my, uh...
All right. The second item that I've got on the agenda is to reapprove an application to work in the county's right of way for Mark Olson. We're doing a private tile crossing on Hawaii Avenue between Hundred and Forty-eth Street and Hundred and Fifty-eth Street. Previously, Mark applied for his permit back in twenty eighteen. Contractor was busy, obviously, and he's just having to get back to it. We have received a updated copy of Royce's insurance, and he's hopeful to do the road crossing here in the next week or so, and then obviously, when crop gets out, he'll do the remainder of the timing in Mark's farm. Mark is both the upstream and downstream property owner on this specific stretch. I did have him fill out an agreement that basically gave himself permission to bring on to himself.
Well, that's true. He can't get after himself that way.
But he's, uh, he's reapplying, and he's used our, our updated application for drainage construction, and he's asking for the two thousand dollar reimbursement versus the fifteen hundred he had been approved for back in twenty eighteen. I don't see a problem with it since he has filled out the new permit and asked to reapply. Prior to that, we had one other applicant, Mr. Myers, who just wanted to follow through and didn't want to go through a reapplication. So, he stayed at the fifteen hundred where Mark has asked for reapproval.
Right, and that is a new policy, and where is this again?
Hawaii Avenue between Hundred and Forty-eth and Hundred and Fifty-eth, so that'd be a mile west of Bowdoin and a mile and a half south.
Okay. So, this is a...
This is a gravel road.
And he wants the crossing from one side to the other.
From one to the other with a twelve-inch tile. I told him that it had to be cement or solid-in-case steel, like a weld casing.
Right.
Which is what we do under board roads.
Right.
He informed me that he'd have Royce'll come in and borrow barricades from us and get the approved material.
Okay.
Get it done in a day.
Oh, I would think so.
Yep.
So, everything's in order?
Everything is in order.
You have no issue? If you just explain that new permit, I'd go ahead and make the motion to approve that, uh, or we approve it, the application for the work in the county right of way for Mark at the crossing, eighteen forty-eight, Two Hundred and Seventieth Street.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
The last item that I have on the agenda is to approve voucher number one for Wyman Inc. for project LC three-eight-two-seven-four-zero for a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents. He has completed installation of all of the box culvert and end sections. Bridge removal is completed. He is up to the top of the box with dirt as of Friday, so he's steadily working on backfilling, and then he'll have to do his driveway culverts and riprap on the four corners, and then we'll come in and we'll rock the road.
What was that number again, Ben?
Uh, one-eight-four-two-nine-zero-thirty cents.
And what percentage is that?
That is ninety-one percent.
Ninety-one percent, so we're just finishing it after.
We've got the high-dollar items taken care of.
Taken care of.
So, I think it's good with that. It sounds like he's on a downhill slide, so to speak.
Yes.
And it will be completed on time.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve voucher number one for Wyman for project LC three-eight-two-seven-four-zero.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for the said project. Any other discussion with ninety-one percent completed? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
Beyond that, we are closing Sheldon Park Road today. We've got Jensen coming in starting tomorrow. We're going to put that tile down the center of the road to try and drain that to get it to quit heaving and breaking out. I'm hoping he can get it done in a day, but it might take two.
You'll probably know as soon as you stick that thing in the ground and start digging.
No, I don't think it's going to.
If that's what it took, we should have done it in the middle of the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
Get it back in the black.
But no, he, he's planning on starting tomorrow, so that road will be closed probably through the end of the day on Wednesday, as we work on backfilling over the top of that with P-rock and then material and getting it rolled in place, ready for traffic to be back on it.
Um, I know that we discussed this a long time ago, but what's the approximate length of...
Of four thousand feet.
What, of the tile?
Yep.
It's about four thousand feet.
Yeah, it's roughly four thousand feet.
Okay.
So, we're bringing it from the south end, which will be the high school blacktop, to just south of the main entrance to Sheldon Park.
Okay.
So, plan is to run six-inch tile. We're going to run about two foot of P-rock on top of that, and backfill with regular material on top of that with a little bit of roadstone hanging on the surface.
Should be good.
So, give that a little while to heal, and then we'll figure out a surface treatment.
Yep.
Perfect.
Good deal. You had a concern about that not too long ago.
Yeah.
But good. That's good timing.
Yep, so as long as we can get it in and done before harvest, we should be all good.
I have a question back on Mark Olson's request. Is there any timeframe when someone applies for something? I just, when I read, signed that, I was the chairman, so it would have been four years ago when I signed it the first time, and all we request is they just update everything?
Yep.
So, we keep that on file?
We, uh, we've worked on the right-of-way permits.
But it never got done, so that's why I'm curious.
We have been keeping everything on file in the past. I don't know, I, I think it probably goes back to the mid-nineties in the file cabinet.
You got a big drawer of them then.
Yeah, before that, we, we didn't really keep them, but I think hopefully, we started the tradition of keeping phone, phone line installation permits and utility permits back in the day, and we just have kept doing it.
Well, I, I mean, that's kind of shocking when I looked and saw four years ago that I signed it, so that's...
Well, I had to go back through the last four. I mean, we didn't know how long.
We didn't know how long ago I'd done it. All right, well, that's good.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else for me?
You're going to be around?
Yeah, I should be around all week.
Okay.
Well, let's know how that starts out out there.
We'll do it.
If the machine is jumping out of the ground and...
I'm sure it'll cut it.
It's going to be hard.
It's going to be hard.
In the butt?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you much.
Thanks, Ben.
All right. I think Mr. McCarthens here from TP Anderson.
It's my turn? Good morning. All right. I'll go to it for everybody. Oh, thanks.
Good. What's your special tune, or?
I must have left it when I was up here last week. She could have thrown that away the whole time. Just for this week.
Just for you.
Okay, well, first of all, I do want to acknowledge that we are a little later than normal, and we'll see when we go through, there's been some new standards implemented and some adjustments that were needed, so all those things work together to kind of push us back just a little bit, but I would have you open up, and first thing I want to point out is this is a draft. I mean, I don't anticipate any changes, but I need to get a management representation letter signed, and we couldn't get all the signatures before this morning's meeting, so I have it here to leave with Trish so we can get that wrapped up. So, uh, so with that, I would like to point out, if we, if you could open up to page two, it's the independent auditor's report, and I normally point out that the responsibility for presenting the financial statements lies with the management here at the county, and so we do anticipate giving that signed management representation letter, accepting responsibility for that. And when that comes in, we do anticipate issuing a clean opinion that should read as follows, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and aggregate remaining fund information of Humboldt County as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and the respective changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles," which is the desired outcome when you look to have an audit done. I would point out at the top of page three, there's an emphasis of a matter paragraph. There's been a couple new governmental accounting standards that have been brought into effect. Gadsby Statement Number Eighty-four on fiduciary activities. The county accounts for all the money that goes to the schools, the cities, the townships, and so on and so forth. Those are all accounted for under fiduciary activities, and in the past, all we ever did in your report, if you look back, it would say, here's the money we have and the tax receivable we expect to collect, and it's all going to get paid out to somebody. Now, the standard says that you'd have a little bit of a fund balance there. It doesn't really make a lot of difference to you guys on a week-to-week basis, but, but that's basically the change there. The other change was that there's a new statement requiring some different accounting for leases. We don't feel like the county had any significant leases that met the standard to require any prior period adjustment for that, but it was implemented during the year. So, I wanted to point those two things out. The next section in your report, this is found on pages four through ten, this is management's discussion and analysis. Kind of gives you some narration of maybe some of the things that went on during the year. I mentioned the new implementation of a fiduciary activities standard and the lease standard. Those are mentioned in here. But all in all, this is, uh, this is a section that if you were looking for something, like what do we spend, what capital assets did we buy, you could possibly find that in, in here. But I would like to have a split forward, if we could, to the fund statements, which are starting on page thirteen, and, and these are, these are, uh, these are the major funds for the county, and then the, uh, the, this is the balance sheet down on page thirteen, and on page fifteen will be the revenues and expenses. These are the funds that you guys deal with all the time. Starting out with the general fund, you ended the year with a cash balance of one million two hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I would say overall for the year, the general fund had an increase in the, in the fund balance, which is a good result, but I would also say that given the transfers in and transfers out, that amounted to a positive impact of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and that was as a result of the bonds that were issued and the money transferred to the general fund for the projects that were underway. So, I just would point that out for the year, that that's the ending cash balance and then the overall change in fund balance. Your rural service fund ended the year with seventy-three thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars in its cash balance. There was a decrease in debt or in fund balance for the, uh, for the rural services fund of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Mainly, the largest item in your rural services is obviously the transfers to secondary roads. There are a few expenditures that come out of that fund, but overall, you know, that's something, you, you had a deficit this year of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven, leaving you with a fund balance of seventy-three thousand five hundred and thirteen. Another year similar to that, you'd be pretty close to break even on your rural services fund. Now, again, this isn't how you have to budget for these funds. This is just a cruel basis method of calculating these things. Your secondary road fund and other major fund ended the year with five point three million dollars in cash balance, and did have an overall increase in the fund balance for the year as well of eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. A lot of this has to do with timing as to when projects get done, but, but there was an increase in fund balance there. And that leaves us with the remaining major fund drainage districts. We have a significant amount of drainage districts in Humboldt County. There was two million two hundred and five thousand dollars on hand in the drainage funds at the end of the year. Most of that money or all that money eventually will go out to pay for projects or pay for outstanding drainage warrants that are, that are currently outstanding, so really not a lot left to discuss there. The remaining funds that would be considered governmental-type funds, which would include your debt service and any capital projects, are all considered non-major and accounted for in the non-major total. This is a, this is a formulator method to determine what's major and what isn't, and these all get lumped together in your non-major funds. That takes us forward then to, starting on page seventeen. This is, uh, this is new. This is required to have a statement of net position for an internal service fund. That's how you guys account for your health insurance. There's money set aside here in the wellness fund, and then also with the third-party administrator. At the year, there, at the end of the year, pardon me, there was total assets on hand of one hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. That was a decrease from the beginning of the year of a hundred and five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Again, most of that money sits with your third-party administrator. Not a lot more we need to discuss there. And then finally, on page twenty, this is your custodial funds or your, the money that you hold for all the other taxing authorities in our area, the city, the schools, the townships, and so on and so forth. And the, the main change here, if you look, compare this report to your previous year's reports, is that there's a net position reported at the bottom, two hundred sixty-one thousand four forty-nine. In the past, this would have all been payable to other governments, so, no issues to note there. That takes us into your footnote, starting on page twenty-two. Footnote number one is a summary of significant accounting policies, and I've already mentioned to you that we implemented two new policies here at the county for the year, and so that's already been discussed. Other than that, you do utilize generally accepted accounting principles. It's what's required by the state of Iowa, and generally speaking, you operate on a cash basis here from week to week, month to month, and then at the end of the year, we're provided with accrual adjustments that are, that get posted to your statement, and then, of course, any adjustments that we might find would be discussed and potentially posted as well. Footnote number two, found on page twenty-nine, describes your cash, cash equivalents and any investments you might have, and what I wanted to point out here is that you do have a, you do have invested in stamped drainage warrants at the end of the year, two million nine hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, which makes a, a pretty significant percentage of your overall cash and investments. It looks like twenty-four percent. So, uh, those are all very solid investments, but they do make up a large part of where your money sits. Footnote number three then is on transfers. The only thing I would... The only thing I was going to mention here is that during the year, you did issue bonds in October of 2020, and those were deposited into the debt service fund initially and then transferred to your general. I think in the future, I would recommend having those deposited in your general right off the bat, and then if you needed transfer money to a capital projects fund or to a debt service fund to refund any outstanding debt, that that's probably the better way to handle that. But all in all, the dollars were able to be tracked, and so that's reflected in your The next item I wanted to point out is on page 32, your long-term liabilities. At the start of the year, we had general obligation notes and bonds outstanding, $928,900. Issued during the year, $2,445,000, and redeemed during the year, $893,900, leaving you with an outstanding balance of $2,480,000, with $290,000 coming due within 12 months. Again, we have a very low amount of debt outstanding for the county compared to some other taxing agencies, so no alarms there with the new debt. But Trish mentioned when she read the draft that, oh, that went up. It's because you issued those new bonds during the year. Footnote number seven then is on page 34, and this is on pension plan. The pension plan for the county is IFRS. IFRS is underfunded, not dramatically. We're in much better shape in Iowa than some public retirement programs. But as a result of being underfunded, the actuary determines what that underfunded amount is, and then the state of Iowa, the Iowa State Auditor and the actuary apportion that out to the various taxing agencies. So Humboldt County shared that according to the most recent allocation with $2,618,566. That's found on the bottom of page 35. This number does not mean that they're ever going to send you a bill for your share of the underfunded portion of IFRS. It just means that the employer contribution rate and the employee contribution rate, if that deficit got to be too much, could potentially be raised in the future. Either one or both, however you want to look at it, could be impacted, so it's just a good item to be aware of. That takes us over then to footnote number eight on page 38. This is on other post-employment benefits, or OPEB for short. This is an interesting accounting standard, but in Iowa, if you work for a local government and you're provided health insurance, if you work until you're age 55, you can stay on that government's insurance until your social security age. At whatever rate, you probably end up having to pay the premium yourself, but if you had to go out and look for that insurance yourself, the people who write the accounting say, well, if you had to buy your own, it's going to cost you more than if you stayed on the group plan. So over the years, we're supplementing that, and there's a liability associated with that. And the actuary for Humboldt County has estimated that amount at the end of the year to be $170,165. I mean, this is one, you know, Pioneer used to have employees. They just disbanded their city. They didn't pay any OPEB, so it's an interesting concept. I don't think anybody will ever have to write a check for that amount, so. That takes us over then to some compliance issues that I want to take a look at. If we flip over to page 44, this is a comparison of your actual to budgeted results, and this matches what was on, this matches what was on your annual financial report that was presented on a cash basis, that there was an over expenditure in your debt service fund. And we did have to, we did have to propose an adjustment for your debt service fund because when those bonds were issued, some of that money went right away to pay off the outstanding bonds that were refunded. And that needs to get accounted for in your records, even though the money didn't come to you and have you put a check out there. So when you take that into account, that caused you in the debt service area to go over your budget. Now, technically speaking, when that happens, you're supposed to stop spending money until you do a budget amendment. Practically, no governments do that, but just something that you guys need to be made aware of. And I know you amended your budget three times last year. I don't know, with a large transaction like that, we'd be certainly willing to discuss, you know, an end-of-year, a budget amendment to see if it looks like you're going to possibly go over, see if you could amend it and capture all that. The next thing I wanted to point out was that internal control comment issued as a result of the bond issuance, and that's down on page 58. We did consider this to be a significant control deficiency. It was a material amount to your financial statement. It was almost $600,000 that had to be adjusted. It was basically an in and an out, so it didn't affect any cash balances. But again, that would have had, it did have an impact on your budget standing and all those issues, so that is something we need to discuss.
Is that when the money actually came in and got paid out directly? Is that how that worked?
Right. I mean, you, when you recorded it, when it was recorded here at the county, the net amount of the funds that came in got recorded. So you issued 2.4 million, but you maybe got 1.7 because some of that money went right away to pay what was outstanding. Well, rather than just reporting the money that got deposited, we got to report the full amount of the bonds that were issued and then report the expenditure as it goes out. So that was the adjustment that was necessary.
So it should have all came in to the general fund, like we're talking, and then allocated out?
Yep.
Got you.
Another area related to compliance, and I don't think that we have any issue here at Humboldt County, but I wanted to make you aware of this, is that one of the hot-button issues with the state right now is contributions to nonprofits unrelated to the county. And I know that the county has signed on to guarantee some loans for the daycare here, the kitty cats daycare, and also contributes money sometimes to the Humboldt County development and Humboldt County housing. And what's required when that's done is that the board must document how donations to any one of those areas provide economic development that benefits the county. And as long as that's documented, I don't think you have a problem with the issue, but they specifically talk about daycares in here. And the question was posed to the state, is sufficient daycare an economic development tool to attract business to the community? And the comment back said, again, that the board must document how donations to a daycare and/or whether or not early childhood education and a safe and secure family environment meet the definition of economic development found in chapter 15, 8.1. We feel that, in our opinion, we did not find a compliance issue with what the county has done, but just want to make sure that it's documented properly there. We've already discussed the budgets, overexpendent, the overexpendent funds in the budget. So basically, that's all I had as far as the report. One other thing that I did bring up, and I talked to Trish about this last week, and this is something that's in recent years become maybe more of an issue for local governments and here at Humboldt County as well. But the federal awards that are expended get to be very, can cause you to have additional audit requirements if you spend enough federal money. So when I was looking over the file, it looked like we were given maybe $120,000 that was spent in federal monies, but after digging into it a little bit more, we came up with $591,501 that were spent of federal monies during the year. The threshold to require additional audit procedures is $750,000, so you weren't over it. But there was a couple of accounts. There was a state funding for drainage assistance that was $250,000, and there was also a significant amount of DOT money that came to the county for bridge work last year that, had it been federal, would have put us over the limit. So I showed Trish last week how you can see all the money that come to the county from the state. We looked at the Iowa checkbook and where to pull these things down from, but that is something that, again, can be significant, and, you know, if at all possible, we'd like to get that upfront so that nothing's missed in the backside. Because what would happen is one of these agencies that passed money through to the county would say, hey, we didn't get your single audit. It wasn't uploaded to the federal audit clearinghouse. We're missing this. Where is it at? And then we would have had to come back and do additional procedures potentially if any one of those items would have put you over the limit. So again, I have this letter here for Trish to get me some signatures, and then we'll be able to give you your bound copies, which I would think we could get that wrapped up this week. But that's everything I have. Has anybody got any questions for me?
I do. I'm not sure if I know how to question or word it. On the debt services, and I don't have a clue what triggers when we transfer from, when we get to a certain amount. Is there, do you guys give us a recommendation when, you know, I know Ben is probably the one that, for secondary roads, when you have money that you need moved from one fund into, and I guess that's why I'm curious, is there a number that we, when we get down to a certain amount, that's what triggers the transfer?
We don't, I mean, we have not provided any of that before. We would certainly be willing to assist if there was a question whether this was going to cause you to go over budget or not. Generally, you move money when you need to spend money out of your general fund or inverse, need to transfer maybe some back to pay principal and interest on a general obligation note. But as far as that goes, generally, the only thing that would trigger a transfer is if you had no room left to spend money under that budget item, but you could spend it on another, then you could potentially do a transfer.
All right. And my other question is, Rick, on this, that fund for, is that what Denise Ballard, where we adjust what we're...
Yes.
For our fund?
That would be our self-funding thing.
Self-funding?
And it fluctuates up and down.
Fluctuates year to year when...
And we're trying to increase that because it got down to...
Got down too low.
$70,000, thanks. So you can see it's moving back up.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering if that was the one.
And this is all retroactive, these two, what we had talked about this year. So this is from 2021.
Right. This is the, yeah, and we're in year, year-end, fiscal year-end, so we did do the implementation for the self-funding.
Yeah.
About that, so that, yeah. But this is showing, obviously, in the fiscal '21.
Correct. But it seems like one year we increase it, and then she thinks we're getting too much of a cushion, so then we need to...
Well, we were pretty high for a long time. We're sitting there with almost a half a million dollars there.
So we lowered the percentage of self-funding.
Right.
Well, in conclusion, Tim, for this a humongous report, there really isn't, a couple things were addressed, but nothing really...
I don't think there's anything dramatic, and I, like I said, I went over the issues with Trish last week, and we found where we can get those federal awards going forward and, you know, make sure that we get the budget amended properly. And if there is a large transaction, you know, as far as a bond issue or something, if there's any question with the accounting on that, I mean, we're right downtown. We could certainly assist and make sure that's accounted for properly on the front end, so...
We'll have more money with the ARPA money because there'll be more expenditures coming out that are federal, so we'll have to be very careful with that.
That's why I mention it, because with ARPA funds, those are unique too. If you, if you would not, so without the ARPA money, if you were under $750,000, clearly you wouldn't have been required to have one under that threshold, but if ARPA money puts you over the top, there's some procedures that have to be done, but not a single audit. So we have to, we do have to watch those federal dollars this year pretty closely, so...
It's only like a, what, a 3,000-page form that we have to fill out?
Oh.
I mean, if that's federal ramifications, I'm assuming there's quite a bit of paperwork.
There's, well, it adds, I mean, it adds a lot of pages to your audit report if you're subject to a single audit. You have a schedule of expenditures, a federal award, you have another report that's required to issue an opinion on those federal awards that were considered to be major. There's additional findings that have to be reported on, so, yeah, it does, it's, there's a lot of additional paperwork that...
Which, depending on when that box over to ours up by boat gets constructed, and that's $275,000, that will be reimbursed federal versus the state swap fund that we've used for the last five, eight years. They're switching us back to federal.
So I'm guessing that you're telling us right now you're going to be the cause of...
I might be the cause.
All right, Tim, you know who you're holding the red against. Well, I called Ben last week, and he said, no, that was state money that paid for the bridge repair, so going forward, it sounds like there'll be some federal money, so...
Well, we appreciate your...
Yeah. Thank you. We appreciate you having me this morning.
Yeah.
When you get that letter, let me know.
Okay.
All right?
I will do that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Have a good day. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Well...
Yeah. I will give Ben kudos for, I got a letter in the mail from Secondary Roads stating that next year we're going to be changing the bridge on the Lone Tree Road, so it was nice that you sent the letters out to the people in the area.
Everybody on Lone Tree.
Got a letter?
Yep.
I think that was good. That way, people can kind of know it's coming, and it's going to be a lengthy project. I'm sure, sure, the road will be shut down for a fair amount of time, and makes a long drive around for some people.
I remember it from when I did the plans, everybody in the vicinity of that project's going to be in dust control as well. I haven't notified them yet. I figured I'd include that in the list when I know who the contractor's going to be.
Okay. When will that be?
I've got, I've got Lone Tree and the one up by boat scheduled for a November letting with the DOT. I have not been notified how many working days or late start date for either one of those yet, but it should be coming out here in the next couple of weeks.
But there's a lot of traffic on Lone Tree Road.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of cars.
All right. Well, looks like we've come to the committee reports.
On the 6th of September, I had an Iowa Workforce Development Zoom meeting, and it was very interesting. And then also on Friday, I had another Zoom meeting. Our Iowa workforce, we were, the feds came in, the Department of Labor came in, and they were doing some auditing on some of the procedures that we do, and they came out very well on it. So I was very happy with that.
Friday was IWDO?
Correct. Correct. Right. Yep, that's it.
That's it?
That's it. I was going to do an infrastructure webinar on Thursday, but I didn't get that done. I had the eastern and central mixed up.
On Tuesday, the 30th, we had that joint meeting with Pocahontas and Alado. And also on Tuesday, the 30th, they had a VA meeting, proven claims and stuff down to the VA office, and that's all meetings I had.
Hey, yep. Going back to August 30th, we did have that teleconference joint drainage district meeting, pardon that. And then this past week, Thursday and Friday, I was up at the, it's actually at Arrowood Resort up in Okeagoo, Spirit Lake. It was the roads, Integrated Roadside Vegetative Management Conference, and we were invited because we do not currently have that plan in our county, so I'm not going to go into a huge detail, other than to say that overall, it was hugely educational and very informative, and that's something that I believe that we should be looking into. And so I derived a whole bunch of information, obviously being there, and I planned... and I plan to look into it further. I'll have some information to report back here in the relatively near future, so. But it was, it was an excellent, excellent conference. Being also the weed commissioner and going to that conference, which is also very good, this was not just another weed commissioners' conference. This is a different perspective of roadside management. And as Rick has stated over the years, like going to the ISAC conferences, you're networking with other counties and how they do essentially the same thing, but do it a little differently. It was a very, very good, didn't know really what it would amount to, but it ended up being very, like I said, educational and informative. So I'm glad I went, and I think there's going to be some, some good practical applications moving forward with the county. And I will be relying on the man Ben for some of my questions and discussion about it. And I'll do that, and hopefully have some more things for us to talk about here in the fairly near future. So that was my week.
Okay, on Tuesday, the thirtieth, I was up here for that joint meeting with Pocahontas and Palo Alto. Even though we have a small portion of that, we need to be here. It was, talk about stuff I didn't know they did. They actually dredged the West Des Moines.
Interesting, wasn't it?
Long, long time ago, and that's what they're planning to do again.
Wow. Well, what they're planning and what they're doing.
Yeah, they, I had no idea they'd done that many, many, many years ago.
That's considered a drainage, they ditch part of it.
Yeah, structure. They call it West Des Moines, the drainage structure.
D D one.
Yeah.
The far northwest end, it was D D one, yeah, they dredged it out in like the?
Forties?
I was going to say thirties.
Thirties or forties, yeah.
You go up there by Emmsburg, it goes, I mean, that branch is pretty narrow. So I'm guessing that's where.
I guess over the years, it's starting to meander, and lots of trees have grown up, and now it's causing flooding issues and water backup.
We did it in Humboldt County.
Did they?
Yeah, to south, north and south of Highway fifteen, where it crosses.
Oh, yeah, you can see there's a lot of?
You can see where it's, it looks straighter than everywhere else.
Yeah, yeah, and that's where all that swampy ground is now. Yeah. Anyways, that was rather an interesting meeting. And then I met with Dave Minicas out here at the landfill again on Thursday. He's, we're working to get an environmental covenant on the landfill out there. He gave me a stack of papers, it's about that tall, that they put together that they're going to submit to the DNR to proceed to hopefully get that, which will greatly reduce our costs on testing and things like that.
So that's like our past tests and?
Yeah, all the history going back, and?
So that we don't have to do as much testing?
Don't have to do as much testing, because they really haven't found nothing in the many, many years they've been testing, so. So we thought we have a good chance of getting that done, and that will help out a lot.
Great.
And then I spoke with Todd Lee just the other day in here, and I need to get together with Ben and Dave Minicas, and maybe all four of us meet out there and sketch out a plan for fencing off the mound sometime.
Sure.
Uh, let's see. Oh, and then on Thursday, I also went to TP Anderson and signed checks for IDDA. They all like to get paid, so.
I bet.
Yeah, so that's what I had.
All right, on the thirtieth, we had a safety meeting up here. Ben put that together, and he was there all day.
I was, yes, I forgot to do the week ahead.
Yeah.
I tried to spend two weeks.
Um, I guess, do you have anything on it, Ben? We did, basically everything was approved and?
Yeah, I decided to add that on, didn't I?
Our copy had been moved forward, and hopefully it's been okayed by Mike Delway, right?
It has, I need to get that on next week's agenda for us to adopt the?
Adopt it.
Adopt the safety plan of action.
Yeah. I think that was what our goal was, is we were going to put that in so we can adopt it, and then that will be given to the employees, and then they sign, right?
They sign that they acknowledge.
They read through and re, basically accepted what is in the manual. So that was on the thirtieth. Then on the thirtieth, I also had a financial meeting with Edno. That was a conference call. Then on the thirty-first, I, for somehow I got, I called Dave. I got home at six thirty, and I'm thinking, we're having that comprehensive plan for Midas out at Secondary Road, so I get out there, and there's nobody there. So I call Dave, and where is everybody? Maybe they moved it over here. Well, I don't know what you're talking about, so I was there a week early. Or I guess I'm not even sure when it is. I haven't? It was the following day?
It was the following.
Okay, well, I didn't get there.
Yeah, I didn't have it wrote down.
Uh, nothing this past week, but I would let you know that the mobile food pantry is tomorrow, Wednesday, at four thirty down Fairgrounds. I would tell people that when you hear on their radio or on TV the mobile food pantries and food pantries are being hit hard, so I guess we anticipate a good response. So if they're planning on coming, I'd come early. So that starts at four thirty, and it goes as long as they have food to give out, so. You have anything, Trish? Okay?
So that comprehensive plan meeting was on September first. At that meeting, they elected that they're going to do two zoning focus groups on September twenty-second. The first one's at three o'clock, and the second one is at six thirty.
September who, twenty?
September twenty-second, where they're looking for the public's input on a variety of topics. That'll be out at the Secondary Roads.
This is for open to the public?
This is open to all public, everybody that lives in Humboldt County for their input.
Was that on that zoning re?
This is on the rewriting.
Comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes. Did, did all of the small community groups get notified on that?
Uh, they were notified, I believe, on the September first meeting. There was probably fifteen or so people at the meeting. I don't think every small community was there, but there were a few.
Okay.
And what, that was what time, Ben, six?
Three, uh, three o'clock and six thirty.
Three.
On that day, there's two different ones?
On the twenty-second. They figured they'd do an early and a late. That way for those that are working, they can still attend the late shift and vice versa.
Three PM and six thirty.
And I also have wrote down on the twenty-first, county conservation meeting is at six up here. I haven't talked with Brad Harklaw to see if they've heard anything on the dam, how they come out with televising and?
Is that six o'clock?
On the conservation?
Yeah.
Yes, I have wrote down anyway.
What are the times on those meetings on, is the twenty-second correct?
The twenty-second at three o'clock and six thirty.
Three and six thirty.
Both the secondary road?
It'll be the same meeting, so I guess we're suggesting to try and make one.
All right. Maybe I won't get mixed up just on that one. All right.
Uh, one thing, just as a public service announcement, namely, in our spraying program, starting this week, if not today, they will be spraying the north half of the county for, on the secondary roads for primarily thistle control. That is in the planned program. That's just notified from Russian Weed Control. They'll be doing it, it's not starting today, this week.
That'll be kind of like a spot spray.
Yes, it is. They do travel all of the miles, and it's a spot spray. And I've mentioned this several times before, but I think one more time to say that, so that's the planned program. That does not mean if someone in the south half, that I haven't already heard from, has any egregious particular thistle issues, we can address those as well right now, so. But that's, this will be considered the fall-spraying, primarily thistles, secondary roads. They'll get that, well, they'll look to, they'll have that done this week, so. Want to let everybody know about that?
All right. With that, it sounds like we get to the end. I entertain a motion.
I would probably object the motion for adjournment.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
In a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, we are adjourned.